Will only be made at the time the subject is scheduled for consideration. Has anyone submitted public comments?
No, Chair, they have not.
Item three minutes, consideration of and action on the minutes of the March 20th, 2024 meeting. Does anyone have any corrections?
Chairman, I do. I think item three A should be amended to show myself as making the motion as I believe Mr. Butler was not in attendance.
Okay.
Otherwise, I would approve, make a motion to approve as amended.
Do we have a motion for Mr. James? Do we have a second?
Second, ma'am.
We have a second for Mr. Victor. Can we take a vote? Yeah, hand vote? Okay, so everyone who approves, raise your hand. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Item four, public hearing. Item four A, public hearing, receive and hear all persons desiring to be heard regarding a proposed special exception to the rear yard setback for 5211 Palm Royale Boulevard, Lot 7, Block 1, Sweetwater, Section 3A, in the residential estate R-1E zoning district.
Hi there. So my name is Emily Urschus, and I will be the representative from the Planning and Development Services team who will be presenting the special exception application to all of these. I always do this. Okay, mic check. Can we hear me loud and clear? Beautiful, awesome. So let's get into it. So the property located at 5211 Palm Royale Boulevard was originally plotted as Sweetwater Section 3A, which was happened, which took place in 1988. The property was then subsequently annexed into the city of Sugar Land in 1997, and at that time, R1E zoning was applied to the property. The applicant is requesting a rear yard special exception to build a new home residential construction. The case overview, the recorded restriction for the property establishes a 40-foot rear yard setback while the R1E zoning district requires a 50-foot rear yard setback. The proposed new home would align with the recorded restrictions and would be located approximately 41 feet from the rear property line encroaching nine feet into the required rear yard established by R1E zoning. The special exception would relieve the 50-foot R1E rear yard setback requirement and would allow for the home to be constructed as proposed. Okay, and then this is going to be the proposed site plan for the property. Can y'all? Yes, okay, beautiful. So this is over here, this is going to be the mouse. So this is going to be the entire home. So it is big, it is beautiful. However, the only portion that we are concerned about is this cabana portion right along this wall. As this would be the part of the new home that would be encroaching into that rear yard setback established by R1E, and I'll go ahead and walk you through that portion, this is going to be the cabana portion of the project. So then this is going to be the front of the cabana. I've tried to show down in the bottom left-hand corner kind of where this will be delineated on that plot plan as there is a lot going on on the plot plan. And then this is going to be the rear elevation of the cabana. So this would be where it would be encroaching into that required 50-yard setback by R1E zoning. And then this is going to be the left elevation for the cabana as well. And this is going to be an aerial of the property. One thing I would like to caveat is when I went out to go place the courtesy sign on the property, this lot is now vacant, so there is no structure on it whatsoever. But by looking at, you know, what is going on with the neighborhood, it appears, you know, even if the home was 41 feet off from that rear property line, instead of 50 feet, it would still be architecturally compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. Speaking of architectural compatibility with the neighborhood, that brings us to the neighborhood analysis. So staff conducted an analysis of the project, and it appears to be architecturally compatible with the neighborhood. There are two nearby homes that do not meet the rear yard setback requirement of 50 feet, and there have been five approved special exceptions within the nearby vicinity. Which brings us to our special exception criteria. Number one, was the property plotted prior to annexation? Yes. Number two, is the recorded restriction less restrictive than the setback that's been established by zoning? Yes. Number three, is a special exception request not less restrictive than the recorded restriction? Yes. And then the fourth criteria, is the project going to be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to the neighborhood? Staff sees no apparent issues with the project at this time. And then public hearing notification requirements were met for this project. There were mailers that were sent out to property owners within 200 feet of the subject property. There was a notification published in the Department Independent as well as on the city's website. Additionally, a courtesy sign was also placed on the property. At the time of creating this PowerPoint, staff had not received any inquiries into this, but since then, we have received one phone call. However, it was just, hey, what's going on with this property? Once we explained the special exception request, there was really no further questions, and that's the only inquiry we've received at this time. This is also going to be the HOA approval documentation that the applicant received for the project. And then at this time, staff recommends an approval of the special exception with the condition that the proposed new home is constructed in accordance with the attached site plan and elevation. They are, yes.
Okay. I open the public hearing. Citizens who desire to address the board with regard to matters pertaining to the public hearing will be received at this time. Does anyone wish to speak? Okay. Then I...
Oh, do I just...
No, okay, then I will close the public hearing. We will now move forward with consideration of and action on a proposed special exception to the rear yard setback for 5211 Palm Royale Boulevard, Lot 7, Block 1, Sweetwater, Section 3A, in the residential estate R-1E zoning district. We addressed the first criteria. The latest recorded plat of the property was approved prior to being annexed into the city. Do we agree that the plat was recorded prior to being annexed? Yes. Okay, go to second criteria. The latest recorded plat or other recorded restriction for the property establishes a setback or other regulation that results in a setback that is less restrictive than the setback required by the City of Sugar Land Development Code, Chapter 2. Do we agree that the recorded restrictions are less restrictive than those established by the City of Sugar Land Development Code? Yes. Third criteria, granting the special exception will not establish a setback that is less restrictive than the setback established by the latest approved plat or other recorded restriction. Do we agree that the proposed special exception is not less restrictive than the recorded restriction? Yes. Okay, fourth criteria, granting the special exception will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to the property or improvements in the district or neighborhood in which the property is located. Does the board have any questions or comments? No? Okay. Staff has examined the proposed special exception for three key aspects. Number one, public safety review. There does not appear to be any public safety issues associated with this request. Staff has not identified safety concerns as a result of the patio cover. Number two, rear yard setback comparison. The proposed addition appears to be generally compatible with the neighborhood based on an analysis of the surrounding area. Approximately two homes within the immediate area do not meet the rear yard setback requirement of 50 feet. The proposed addition is in compliance with the recorded restriction. Number three, general architectural. The proposed new home appears to be architecturally compatible with the existing single-family residence and neighborhood. If there are no additional comments, do we have a motion for approval or denial?
I move that the special exception to the rear yard setback requirements and the residential estate R-1E district for the property located at 5211 Palm Royale Boulevard, Lot 7, Block I, Sweetwater, Section 3- A, be granted with the condition that the new residence is constructed in accordance with the attached site plan and elevations.
I have a motion for Mr. Butler. Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a second for Mr. Morton. All those who approve, raise your hand. Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We have item four, the orientation.
Just read what's on the...
Yeah, sure. Review of and discussion on purposes, roles, responsibilities, and functions of the zoning board of adjustment.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to provide your annual orientation. My name is Jessica Rodriguez. I am the interim Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. Welcome this evening, and thank you for joining us. The solicits of all of our board members that we have, we're very lucky that we have the same board members that have continued in service. So thank you again for serving for another term if you are new. I'm gonna go over your authority, rules of procedure, where that comes from. So your power comes from Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 211, city charter. We have outlined things in our development code, and then you have your adopted rules of procedure. Rules of procedure are dictated by Chapter 211. The city of Sugar Land operates under board rules for this board. That is in the swearing of your speakers. Attendance, your meeting times, and your meeting times are always on the third Wednesday of every month unless we have a case that's canceled, unless we have a meeting that's canceled because of lack of cases. Attendance is your five board members that we have. Four is a quorum. The zoning board of adjustment is a very unique board that you need four to do anything, to pass anything. Five is preferred that we have at the meeting, but we can go, we can move on with four. The expectation is that you attend all the regular meetings that you have, and alternates attend the same. And if you cannot make it, that you let us know. We expect that our alternates sit in the audience so that they are prepared to sit on the dais in case we have a regular member that is not in attendance. We also expect that the alternates sit in the audience, that way they get a familiarity with the issues that are brought before them, and also understand the decision-making process for those sitting on the dais. Behind the scenes, what does that look like? Staff, we are your liaison between the applicant and yourselves. We prepare reports for you. We review and analyze those cases. We post the public hearing notices, and we coordinate with other staff when reviewing, as an example, these special exceptions. Those are coordinations that are held with our building department as well as our engineering department. We provide that written agenda to you as well as the PowerPoint presentation. You are also the airport zoning board of adjustment. This is not something that I'm aware of that y'all have ever had to have an item on. It's talked about in Chapter 2. It's outlined more in Chapter 9 of what your role is, and that would be any variances or appeals that you would have to any of the airport zoning regulations with those airport zoning, airport zoning being AZ1 and AZ2. There is a requirement that FAA has to make a determination before it's brought before you, but it's the same situation where something would be brought for you as a variance, and you have that same decision power. In the event something would ever come up in this manner, we would give you a very detailed orientation on what that process looks like for the analysis. Types of cases that are brought before you. You see variances, you see special exceptions that you've seen tonight, and then appeals, and I'll go into what each one of those are. The Texas statute allows for variances as a relief when there are special circumstances that are present and may be unique with a property. If you were to be seeing continued variances for certain things, that means that there needs to be an adjustment in the code. We shouldn't be seeing many of these meetings. It's great that you've only met since March of last year. That means a lot of stuff's working in our code, and we're doing our job. It does not allow for land use variances. So if someone wanted to do, let's say, a business on a residential property, they cannot ask for a variance to that land use so they could put a business there. That's a completely different process. That's a zoning amendment, and that's heard before the Planning and Zoning Commission with a final action by city council. Sorry, these are... I'm not sure it happened to my slides. We need a four out of five vote, just like with anything. There are four criteria that we look at, that the variance that's requested is not contrary to public interest. Two, special circumstances or conditions for the land or the building. A literal interpretation of the enforcement, it results in an unnecessary hardship, and that the spirit of the arduance is met and observed, and there's not a substantial, like, injustice or material hardship that happens with four. So with public interest, again, this is subjective. All the criteria, the four criteria for variances are subjective. In this case, with public interest, we look at the same things that you look at for special exception as far as like public safety, fire, emergency personnel. We look at other things in the neighborhood and context for that study, and then taking into account any public comments or concerns that we would have about that. Section two with special circumstances or conditions that apply to the land. Again, this one's subjective. You don't see too many of these, how they exist, but they do pop up sometimes. You may see something where you have an irregularly shaped lot, and it makes it impossible for, let's say, an addition to be constructed without going into a setback. In that case, you would have a variance criteria two that would have some uniqueness to it where they can't conform to that setback. Criteria three is the literal enforcement results in an unnecessary hardship. Subjective, we've gotten further guidance from state law that exists in House Bill 1475, and we've got five components with it. This is the first time with variances in Texas that we've been able to take into account financial considerations. You've probably heard through the years before this House bill was passed, hardships are not financial. In this case, it takes a component of that. Specifically, if you have more than a 50% cost that's greater for that variance compared to your appraisal value, and we'd go off of the most recent appraisal value that we have from Fort Bend County. Also, two, which it's not actual dollar signs, but if you have a loss of your property by 25% or more, that it's unusable by being complying with the regulations, again, that would be considered a hardship on it. Loss of compliance with any other municipal code, so causing, causing the owner to be able to comply with the regulations now has something else fall into compliance. We don't, we don't want that. Any sort of unreasonable encroachment onto another property, that's a given, and nonconformity of an existing structure. So a little bit, a little bit more analysis there that could benefit a property owner when we look at finances. Criteria four, which is the spirit of the ordinance. This is where the board is going to weigh the intent of what that ordinance is saying. You know, are there special circumstances with this property that other people don't have? Are they asking for something that all of the other property owners in their neighborhood are able to comply with? Again, this is subjective. Conditions. Conditions can be whether it's compliance, where you're gonna ask for like a site plan that's put with it, a circulation plan, or there could be some mitigation. You may feel that it's appropriate for a variance, but maybe there needs to be a little bit of landscape buffering because it's too close to the property line. You can always grant a variance that's less than what the applicant is requesting. So it can meet, or it can be less, or you could, you could say no. I don't know what's happening. I... We went right, lost the rest of my slides, sorry for variances. Okay, special exceptions, sorry. And we talked about these, and we have not talked about these. You just had a special exception before you. This is a mechanism that is allowed by statute for zoning. It replaces the variance process because it's yes or no answers, whether if a property was annexed before it was in the city, and if there are other restrictions that are with that property, whether it's an HOA or platted restriction. So just opposite of what you'd see with a zoning variance, only one of the criteria with special exceptions is subjective. The one, two, and three are yes or no answers. One, two, and three, staff makes that verification and presents it to you in an analysis, and hopefully it's something that you would, you agree with in your, in your final action. Four is very similar to another criteria that you have with a variance about it being detrimental to public welfare or injurious to properties within the district neighborhood. Again, one of those things of, is this property owner getting something else that maybe my other property owners haven't gotten? And you saw in the example, the case that was brought before you that Emily presented, there were other special exceptions and people that were meeting that rear yard 40 foot setback established by the restrictions rather than the 50-foot rear yard setback from the zoning. This is an example of the site analysis of just what we spoke about of whether we're looking at a platted restriction or if it's a HOA restriction. The special exception case that you saw before you was a HOA restriction, not a platted restriction. Criteria four, again, is looking at the public safety issues and your, your surrounding area. This is what it was referred to as a detrimental analysis of the aerial setback and then the archer, architectural materials. Decisions. When you're looking at a special exception, you have three, three options. You can just, you can just approve it. You can approve it with conditions, or you can, you can choose not to. This is an example of where it meets all the criteria, and you are gonna have an action of approval as you did on your previous item. This is when you would have a denial, where it's not meeting item number one, item number four, because item number four is that subjective item, that if we hadn't gotten, staff hadn't done analysis on one, two, and three, we wouldn't be here before you to look at number four. With approval, that's if you not really, you know, sure about that last, like, criteria there, you could, you could like change some things with the conditions. Again, just like with a, with a variance application, it could always be something that's less than what the property owner wanted. You may have an instance where, you know, maybe not everybody in the neighborhood was to that 40-foot line, and people were, you know, on 50. Well, you know, is that kind of fair if they had that, you know, prior to annexation? You might think that 45 is, you know, completely like reasonable with that. These are some examples of that. You can also have caps on square footage, whatever you feel is reasonable that would meet criteria four with your decision. This is an example of a site plan, just similar to what I have spoke about, about the special exception for tonight. This is actually one that you looked at last year, last March, where you had a 10-foot rear property line. They were wanting to go to three feet, which was part of, I believe was part of their recorded restriction, and that special exception was, was granted for that. Appeals. I don't think this is something that comes before many zoning board of adjustments or appeals. These are any regulations that are in Chapter 2 that an applicant may feel is not the right interpretation of the director. So if you feel that, that it's not the correct interpretation, you can appeal that determination with this board. However, if that does pass, what the determination of that board is, is not what the interpretation is in the code. So it runs with it. Do you have any questions? Okay. I'm, I'm gonna stay up here just while Ms. Smith does her presentation, and I'm just going to, I'm just gonna run the PowerPoint.
Yes, I apologize for not sitting up. I managed to sprain my ankle last night, and this will prevent you from having to watch me hobble back and forth. So if you wouldn't mind going to the first slide, which you have, all right, so I'm just gonna give you a high-level overview about the Texas Meetings Act, which basically it requires that your meetings be open to the public and that any decisions that you make are public. Great, if you can, next slide. There are some basic requirements with regards to open meetings. The city is required to post notice of your meeting 72 hours in advance, including posting on our website. Typically, staff gets those posted by end of day on the Friday before the meetings. Some required information that has to be posted includes the date, time, and location of the meeting, and exactly what you will be discussing, and there does have to be enough detail included so that a member of the public can tell exactly what is going to be discussed. And any decisions that you make, such as the one you made today, have to be done in public. With regards to these meetings, you are only supposed to speak, or legally, on items that are posted on the agenda, and during the public comment portion, citizens are supposed to keep their comments to items that are posted on the agenda, although as you may be familiar, we very rarely, if ever, have anyone come and make public comment. We do still have to afford citizens the opportunity. If someone was to ask you a question during public comment about something that's not on the agenda, we typically, we would just, we would note it and potentially look into it, but we would not get into a discussion if it is not something posted on the agenda. Next slide. So just briefly, what does a meeting? A meeting for it to happen, we do require a quorum, and for this board that is four members, there does need to be, it has to be with regards to an item of public business, that's typically going to be special exceptions. There has to be some sort of deliberation, and again, it does have to be open to the public. There are a few exceptions. Typically, what you would see for this particular board, in order to move back to an executive session, which is basically, it's a closed meeting where you are allowed to have discussion in private. For this board, if we were to do that, it would be for you to receive legal advice. You would receive any legal advice and have discussion and close, in the closed session, but then we would come back and hear, and any decisions that you made on that item would still be made in public. One thing to be aware of is a walking quorum. There could be a scenario where even though you are not here, you not are actually meeting, you could still have a quorum where there is a discussion of city business. And a good example of this, just hypothetically speaking, let's say the chair sent out an email to all of the other board members, and you all individually responded. At the end of the day, you know, you may not have had a group discussion with all of the board members engaging on a matter of public interest or something that's on the agenda, but the result is there have actually been a discussion between at least, you know, two of you at a time about a matter. And so even though you have an all deliberative together, there has been private deliberation about a matter. Typically, I don't think you'd really see that with this board. All that is to say, if you get an email from someone, be careful about hitting reply all. That is one way to avoid it. And also, just be careful what you post on your social media, if you post anything about items that are going to come before you. And if you ever have any questions about anything related to that, you can always reach out to staff, and Legal is always available to answer any questions. There are some times where maybe you might be assembled altogether, and it would not actually be considered a meeting. Say if you were all invited to an event of the city, the opening of a facility, something like that. Typically, if we do extend that invitation, though, we will sometimes post a notice that you would all be present there just to kind of make sure that the public is aware, and you would just need to be careful about discussions that you have, just to make sure you don't accidentally engage in deliberation outside of the presence of this room. Why is this important? Well, there's civil liability. Basically, if you took an action and the notice wasn't properly posted, or if it was just incorrect, or was in a private, the action is voidable. And then next, there are also some criminal penalties to be aware of, but one of the main reasons you have an attorney sitting up here with you at all your meetings is to make sure that the Open Meetings Act is followed. But yes, penalties if there was a criminal violation. And really, in order for there to be a criminal violation, you pretty much have to deliberately and intentionally try to engage in deliberations outside of the act. But there's a fine, some potential jail time. You should be aware of that. Just in short, best practices, don't talk about cases that are kind of going to come before you outside of a posted meeting. Try not to email each other about posted matters. Be careful what you post on social media. Try and be aware of the walking quorum issue, and when you are here, just stick to talking about what's on the agenda. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Okay.
To item six, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion from Mr. James. I have a second. Second from Mr. Butler. All those who approve, raise your hand.